The Clerk will call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo. Counselor Flaherty. Oh, Counselor Siomo. I thought you were. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Jackson?
Yes.
Counselor Linehan?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy? Counselor O'Malley?
President.
Counselor Presley? Thank you. Counselor Wu? Counselor Yancy? And Counselor Zachem?
Here.
Mr. President, we do have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm informed by the Clerk that a quorum is in attendance. I'd like to thank all your hearty souls for making it here today so that we can get on with the city's business. I now have the pleasure of introducing the guest of Counselor Josh Zachem and its Minister Katie Soudara from Arlington Street Church, which is directly across Boylston Street from my district and someplace that, you know, that I've visited in my many years here in Boston. It's a beautiful church. I'd like to ask Counselor Josh Zachem to come to the microphone and introduce the minister, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Katie Soudara is one of the ministers at the Arlington Street Church, which is right on the corner of Arlington and Boylston Street, really in the center of District Eight and the center of our downtown, has been a beacon, I think, for folks all across the city and across the region. After graduating college, Katie dedicated her next two years to public service. She was one of the in-house, live-in tutors at the Match Charter School, living there and working with folks and the students there to be as successful as they can be, and also then worked at a local Unitarian-run children's village in northeast India on a collaborative orphanage project. After these great works, Katie returned to the United States and to Boston, where she attended Harvard Divinity School, and was approved for the Unitarian Universalist ministry last fall. Katie's been working at the Arlington Street Church for the last...
Two years, I believe?
The last two years, and is here to join us today.
Thank you all for having me today. I want to especially thank Counselor Zachem for extending the invitation for a minister from Arlington Street to join you all at today's council meeting. We appreciate your representation of our area of the city and the back bay, and we really appreciated this offer. I also want to extend greetings to Counselor Siomo, who is actually the district representative from Brighton, which is where I live. Now will you all join me in prayer? Dear God, Spirit of life and of love, who we know by many names and in many ways, we ask that your presence be known and felt among us today. We know that our city does not always do right by its residents who are most in need. God, hear our prayers that we and our city may be better. As the snow continues to fall outside the city hall, we ask that you give us the courage and the creativity to solve the housing crisis in the city of Boston, where our neighborhoods are racially and economically divided, and where there's simply not enough affordable housing for all those who need it. We know that inadequate housing deteriorating neighborhoods harm our future, as many of our children attend substandard schools. God, please hear our prayer. We ask that as gun violence continues to plague our city, you inspire us to create peace and equity. We know that it is already too late for many victims of violence, and we especially keep in our hearts the friends, family, and neighbors of the eight Bostonians who were killed in our city in the month of January: Luis Arroyo, Samuel Constant, Brandon John, Trevane Keen, Rick Knight, Clarence McGregor, Tisia Montgomery, and Julian Printemps. God, please hear our prayer. We ask that the counselors here today in their decision-making remember the effects for every person in Boston: the young and the old, white and of color, rich and poor, citizen and undocumented, queer and straight, housed and homeless. We are one Boston, and we are all stronger when every member of our community is remembered and cared for. God, please hear our prayer. We are so thankful to live in this city of great pride and strength, where our democracy is at work and all our voices may be heard. We are so thankful for the opportunities these city counselors can provide for their constituents and beyond. Thank you for this day that you have made and for this opportunity for us to be together. Blessed be, and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Minister Soudara. Thank you for those moving words and for inspiring message. At this time, I'd like to ask Counselor Zachem to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
By the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. At this time, Counselor Zachem will escort Minister Soudara outside the chamber. Thank you. Do an approval of the minutes. Okay. If there are no corrections to be made to the minutes, the minutes stand approved, hearing no objections, the minutes do stand approved. Thank you. Communications from his honor, the mayor? Am I... Okay, thank you. And Clerk, would you please recognize Counselor Yancy as present and note that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 0302, message in order to reduce the FY14 appropriation for reserve for collective bargaining by $548,081 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for the FY14 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and the Administrative Guild SEIU Local 188. Docket number 0303, message in order approving a supplemental appropriation of $548,081 for the Boston Public Schools for the FY14 to cover the cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Administrative Guild SEIU Local 188, filed in the office of the city clerk on February 3, 2014.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The matter will refer to the Committee on Ways and Means. Reports of public offices and others?
Once again, would you like me to read all of your appointments?
Yes, if you could read all of the appointments, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Docket number 0304, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Lisa Manstorf Pollock as the Director of Communication effective January 29, 2014. Docket number 0305, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Alejandra St. Gillian as Director of the Office of New Bostonians effective February 3, 2014. Docket number 0306, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Joyce Linehan as the Chief of Policy effective January 3, 2014. Docket number 0307, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Trin T. Win as a trustee of the Neighborhood Jobs Trust expiring January 8, 2016.
Clerk, matters 0304 through 0307 will be placed on file. Our motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0308, Counselor Yancy offered the following order requesting certain information under 17F regarding lists of all non-bid contracts for FY 2013 and year-to-date FY 2014 by name of contractor, gender, department, address, amount, and race.
Counselor Yancy?
Mr. President, this is a 17F order requesting information, and I'm moving suspension in passage.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Yancy. Counselor Yancy moves for suspension and passage of docket 0308. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And the ayes have it. The docket has been suspended and passed.
Docket number 0309, Counselor Yancy offered the following order requesting certain information under 17F regarding lists of all authorized but unused loan orders as of December 31, 2013.
Counselor Yancy?
Again, this is a request for information, and I'm moving suspension in passage.
Counselor Yancy moves for suspension and passage of docket 0309. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The matter has been suspended and passed.
Docket number 0309, I'm sorry, docket number 0310, Counselor Yancy offers the following order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding Veolia Transportation concerning the events of October 8, 2013.
Counselor Yancy?
Thank you very much. This is a carryover from the last calendar year, so request for information, and moving suspension in passage.
Counselor Yancy moves for suspension and passage of docket 0310. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 0310 has been passed. Suspended and passed.
Mr. President, would you like me to read?
Yes, please.
Docket number 0311, Counselor Linehan offered the following ordinance regarding the residency requirements for certain construction projects. And docket number 0312, Counselor Linehan offered the following order, a petition for a special law regarding an act on tax of certain alcoholic beverages.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This matter, 0311, is a refile, and I'll be very brief. This is the matter that during last year's session, there was a number of discussions, hearings, and meetings on the matters relating to the ordinance that empowers Boston residents at construction sites. And there was language in the existing ordinance that had been a barrier in many ways to effectively utilizing the ordinance. So this is to revisit this whole discussion. I look for having, there was enormous amount of effort put out by a number of counselors on this matter. I'll use this as an opportunity to revisit this docket and to listen to the public once again on this matter, and hopefully we can resolve the ordinance, fortify it, so they can't be challenged and utilize it in a manner which it was originally intended. Thank you. And docket, did you read both?
I did.
Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. I wasn't paying attention.
Sorry.
Docket 0312, this particular petition is a home rule petition for a local options tax on alcohol, off-premise sales of alcohol, to directly fund substance abuse services and recovery services in our city. As many people know, that a referendum at the state level squashed that particular tax, and this is an opportunity for at least Boston to renew the option for those resources and to affect an important area in our community. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Docket's number 0311 and 0312 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations.
Excuse me, please. Yeah, sure. Counselor Jackson. Okay, there are now. I've observed them now. Okay. So, I did, Counselor Jackson, were you just acknowledging that there were lights blinking? Or did you want to say something?
Absolutely. I wanted to speak on your 0311.
Yes.
So...
Please do.
One of the things that has been happening is Counselor Presley, as well as Counselor Ross, had pulled together a committee, a subcommittee, to really look at these issues. I think that we need to be very thoughtful and deliberate relative to these issues, considering that the legal status of residency, gender, as well as race, actually, the precedent is, they're actually separate in the law. I do believe, from the Springfield case, that we are moving in the right direction relative to the issue of residency, in that, just so folks understand, the issue here, and we got a, actually, we got a bunch of lawyers on the council now, but, is the Privileges and Immunities Clause. So essentially, the Boston residents' job policy says that we could prefer someone from Boston over someone from another state. It currently states that. What we have to do, and what I believe needs to happen, is we need to tighten that component of the law up and say that we can prefer a Boston resident over someone from Avon or Stoughton, so intrastate. And what we found in the studies actually show is that 90% of the contracts that are done by the city of Boston are actually done by people who are in the state of Massachusetts. So if we were able to actually tighten up that language, that would allow us to truly enforce this. We know that the past administration actually looked at this policy from a best-faith effort. As a legislator, I have an issue with tossing legislation out that tells people just to have a good go at it. That's not good enough. The things that we pass in this body should be taken seriously, and we should be able to enforce them. I do think, though, that we need to be very thoughtful, and we need to walk through this process with as much clarity and rigor so that we don't inadvertently take away what we should be doing. Boston residents should be able to work in the city of Boston before anybody else. The residents, the residents also should be, and the people working should be, a reflection of the city of Boston that we currently live in. And also, yeah, we're talking about construction, but women are part of the city of Boston, and they should be involved and are currently involved in construction and deserve their rightful place there also. So I would ask that you sign, you add my name to this, but also that we are very, very thoughtful, and we take this very slow as to not move in improper direction and trigger something that could have an inadvertent unraveling of the current Boston residents' job policy. I also would just note, and I want to give credit to my predecessor, Bruce Bowling, who put forth that over 20 years ago, and it's still in place, and we want to make sure that we strengthen that, not get rid of it. Thank you so much.
No, thank you, Counselor Jackson, and thank you for signing on. Counselor Presley?
... my esteemed colleague and friend, District 7 Counselor Tito Jackson. I wish to add my name. I come in the maker. I'm glad we are revisiting this issue. As was alluded to in Counselor Jackson's remarks, for two-plus years, Counselor Ross and I did co-chair on a monthly basis a Boston residents' jobs policy working group with a robust group, diverse representation of advocates, who have been working in this space for really decades, along with Counselor Jackson's father and others, people who have been really toiling in the social justice vineyard, as it were. But, you know, what we know is that, and we thank God for Bruce Bowling, but every law is only as good as its enforcement, and so we have continued to struggle to put real teeth to this and to see that enforcement. Counselor Ross and I did introduce, and you all helped us to see past, an ordinance to bring greater teeth to that law, and that is to bring greater transparency. We now, because of that ordinance that was passed by all of you, now this information is online, what was previously reported only to the Boston Employment Commission, and what I know is that that which gets measured gets done. So we brought a greater transparency, and through the work of the coalition, some steadfast vigilance and advocacy to see greater enforcement. But we do have to do something aggressive, and I do agree that we should move with a thoughtfulness and be deliberate, but with a deliberate urgency, because it's long overdue that we see some real enforcement here. And I think too often, when people think about the Boston residents' jobs policy, they only think about it according to those diversity, good faith efforts, you know, but the first provision of it is about Boston residents. It's about Boston residents, so it is what is within our best interest to see that enforced. But what I would say came out of these two-year, monthly meetings with this diverse coalition of 60-plus advocates, when this was originally introduced, and again, we applaud the intent behind it, is that although this stands to potentially strengthen an area where we have been most vulnerable, it might also threaten constitutional challenge on the diversity component, which is of equal import. So I wish to have my name added, and I look forward to a robust discussion about this, moving with a deliberate sense of urgency for real reform. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Yancy?
Much, Mr. President, I commend you for offering this particular ordinance. I would like to have my name added to this and the other proposed ordinance that you have before us. I rise, Mr. President, to point out that docket number 0193 also addresses the issue, focusing primarily on the impact on women and people of color as well as residency. So I welcome your longstanding commitment to justice and equality and economic equity, and again, wish to have my name added.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Yancy. Counselor Lamatina?
You have my name on to docket number 0311. Thank you.
Docket 0311. Counselor Baker would also like to have his name added, along with Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Yancy asked for his name. Thank you. Before I move on to the other matter, was there any comments on matter 0312? Counselor Baker would like to have his name added. Counselor McCarthy would like to have his name added. Okay, thank you very much, and we'll move on? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Yancy?
Mr. President, I too would like to have my name added to this matter and point out that we did, as you know, accept the local option with regards to mail's tax. The mail's tax today is 6.25% for the state and 0.75% for the city. So I'll just point it out, just to raise a question that can be certainly dealt with in committee. The question is, what's the current taxation on liquor sales and whether or not the 6.2 will be dedicated to the state, and we'll have to, or are we doubling the tax on liquor? Doesn't have to be answered right now, but just raised as a question. Thank you.
Well, I thank you for signing on, and appreciate the question. So those two matters have been assigned to committee, and docket 0313, Madam Clerk?
Docket 0313, Counselor Yancy offered the following resolution urging the administration to expand the information in the FY15 recommended budget books to include in each department's information the number of contracts managed by the department that includes expenditure totals and a breakdown of the percent of minority and women-owned businesses.
Counselor Yancy?
Thank you very much. First of all, Mr. President, I'd like to thank our Budget Director Kate Sullivan for helping out in drafting of this particular resolution. I rise, Mr. President, because I am going to ask suspension in passage. As you know, the process of developing the fiscal year 2015 budget has already commenced. Each department by now should have submitted its request for their budget in the administration. And this information I'm requesting, Mr. President, is identical to information we request of every department during every budget session, at least for the better part of the last two decades. The difference is that it will be included in the budget book rather than in a routine request, so that we can have an opportunity to review the activities of the department even before the actual hearings begin. Of course, they will be followed up with questions during the actual hearing. So this should be considered relatively routine to any of us that participated in the budget process in the past. It's something that we request of the administration every year in every department anyhow. So I'm moving suspension in passage so that the administration can include this before, you know, the budget document goes to print and before they submit it to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancy. Counselor Presley?
Always had a level of focus and vigilance on matters such as these. I think this effort is long overdue, and again, that which gets measured gets done, and by bringing greater transparency, there will be greater accountability, and, you know, success that isn't shared really isn't success at all. And so, it's cliche, but I don't tire of saying it because it's true. So, you know, I look forward to voting in the affirmative, and again, I come in the maker.
Counselor Jackson?
Before I move on to the other matter, was there any comments on matter 0312? Counselor Baker would like to have his name added. Counselor McCarthy would like to have his name added. Okay, thank you very much, and we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Yancey.
Mr. President, I too would like to have my name added to this matter, and will point out that we did, as you know, accept the local option with regards to mail tax. The mail tax today is 6.25% for the state and 0.75% for the city. So I'll just point it out, just to raise a question that can be certainly dealt with in committee. The question is, what's the current taxation on liquor sales and whether or not the 6.2 will be dedicated to the state, and we'll have to, or are we doubling the tax on liquor? Doesn't have to be answered right now, but just raised as a question. Thank you.
Well, I thank you for signing on and appreciate the question. So those two matters have been assigned to committee, and docket 0313, Madam Clerk.
Docket 0313, Counselor Yancey offers the following resolution urging the administration to expand the information in the FY '15 recommended budget books to include in each department's information the number of contracts managed by the department that includes expenditure totals and a breakdown of the percent of minority and women-owned businesses.
Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much. First of all, Mr. President, I'd like to thank our Budget Director, Kate Sullivan, for helping out in drafting of this particular resolution. I rise, Mr. President, because I am going to ask suspension and passage. As you know, the process of developing the fiscal year 2015 budget has already commenced. Each department by now should have submitted its request for their budget in the administration. And this information I'm requesting, Mr. President, is identical to information we request of every department during every budget session, at least for the better part of the last two decades. The difference is that it will be included in the budget book rather than in a routine request, so that we can have an opportunity to review the activities of the department even before the actual hearings begin. Of course, they will be followed up with questions during the actual hearing. So this should be considered relatively routine to any of us that participated in the budget process in the past. It's something that we request of the administration every year in every department anyhow. So I'm moving suspension and passage so that the administration can include this before, you know, the budget document goes to print and before they submit it to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Counselor Presley.
Always had a level of focus and vigilance on matters such as these. I think this effort is long overdue, and again, that which gets measured gets done, and by bringing greater transparency, there will be greater accountability. And, you know, success that isn't shared really isn't success at all. And so it's cliche, but I don't tire of saying it because it's true. So, you know, I look forward to voting in the affirmative, and again, I come in the maker.
Counselor Jackson.
I think the issue here is one of transparency. Counselor Yancey has been a steadfast advocate around transparency. He also was the author and creator of the Post Audit Committee, and I want to compliment him on his great work for that. I also think, though, underlying all of this is how can our government and the dollars that we use, and we're not saying more dollars, but the dollars that we use, recirculate in our neighborhoods and communities and benefit businesses as well as individuals from the city of Boston, and also that those individuals be a reflection of the city. I thank Counselor Yancey for being, continuing to be, a steadfast voice around this issue of transparency as well as accountability. I would like to have my name, actually, like to have my name added. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Could you please add Counselor Jackson and Counselor Presley's name to the order? Thank you, to the resolution. At this time, Counselor Yancey would like to suspend and adopt matter 0313. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. 0313 has been suspended, adopted, and passed. Personnel orders.
Docket number 0314, Counsel Lanninghan offered the following order.
Counselor Siomo, on behalf of Counsel Lanninghan, it's a personnel and matter, suspend and pass matter 0314. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Matter 0314 has been passed. Clerk, is that the end of personnel orders? Thank you. Trying to keep matters straight up here. The clerk will now call out dockets from the Committee of the Hold to be assigned to the appropriate committees. These matters have all been read already into the record, so I ask the clerk to read them.
Docket number 0226 was assigned to the Committee of the Hold and now will be in the Committee of Arts and Culture. Docket number 0132, 0179, and 0181 was assigned to the Committee of the Hold and will now be assigned to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Docket number 0188 was assigned to the Committee of the Hold and will now be referred to the Committee on Post Audit. Docket number 0134 was assigned to the Committee of the Hold and is now assigned to the Committee on Environment and Parks. Dockets number 0177, 0178, 0182, 0184, 0185, 0190, 0191, and 0193, 0194, and 0227 was assigned to the Committee of the Hold and will now be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Docket number 0183, 0186, 0187, and 0192 was assigned to the Committee of the Hold and will now be referred to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities. And docket number 0136, which was assigned to the Committee of the Hold, is now assigned to the Committee on Housing. Docket number 0135 and 0176 was assigned to the Committee of the Hold and is now being referred to the Committee on Human Rights and Civil Rights. Docket number 0189 was assigned to the Committee of the Hold and is now referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Docket number 0180 was assigned to the Committee of the Hold and is now assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Madam Clerk, did we reassign docket 0188? Did you already read that? I'm sorry, I missed it.
I know, I was going to.
Okay, thank you. I'm informed by the clerk that there are, that there are no late-file matters in the hands of the clerk, and there is one late-file matter which, in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. At this time, I, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Yancey. Absolutely. We have a recess? We're back in session. At this time, if I could ask indulgence of my colleagues, I'd like to give you an update on some of the matters that I've been dealing around, the organization of our central staff and personnel alignments. So basically related to the committee, the committee assignments and so forth. So if we could have an executive session for 10 to 15 minutes in the curly room, I'd really appreciate it. Then we'd come back and we'll do green sheets and memoriam. So I'd like to recess to executive session, if I could. Thank you.[1041.33] If anyone wishes to remove our docket from the green sheets, you may do so now. There are no matters from the green sheets, all right? The consent agenda? The Chair now moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. Counsel Liency? Yep? Are there any objections? Counsel Liency, please proceed.
Mr. President, I'd like to thank you for appointing me Chair of the Post Audit and Oversight Committee. Earlier this week, I did receive some statistics in terms of where the city stands. I just want to bring to our colleagues' attention the issue of overtime. And incidentally, these numbers have absolutely nothing to do with the current administration. The Walsh administration wasn't even sworn in as of the date of this report, which is December 31, 2013. But I'm concerned, Mr. President, because as of December 31, 2013, 50% of the fiscal year is ended, but yet more than 72% of the overtime budget has already been spent. I'm particularly concerned with a number of departments which have actually overspent their allocation for the entire year already in that first half. The Library Department, the Assessing Department, the Purchasing Department, even our Clerk's Office, where we neglected to provide an overtime budget there, they spent more than $7,000. Property and construction is significantly over, although that could be corrected depending upon how we use our capital loan orders. The Transportation Department is seriously over. In fact, they were allocated $197,000 for their overtime. As of December 31, they've already expended more than $683,000 on overtime, which means they're in the hole for almost $500,000. Parks and Recreation, the Center Fleet Management, even the Boston Centers for Youth and Families. And of course, we predict that we're going to have major problems in the area of public safety. The Police Department, for example, has been allocated less than $33 million for the police overtime. And already, as of December 31, they've expended more than $26.3 million. Fire Department allocated roughly $16 million. They've already spent more than $9 million. And at that rate, both of those departments are going to be significantly over. At that rate, the Police Department will end up spending $53 million. And the Fire Department, more than $18 million, both being significantly over the appropriation. So I don't want anyone's eyes to start glassing over because I went through those numbers. The point is this. We have to maintain some control over overtime. And most departments are projected to be significantly overspent in the overtime. There's only two or three exceptions. If you project out from the first half of the fiscal year, most, if not all, departments are going to exceed their overtime. I raise this now so that the Walsh administration can begin to focus attention on this area. And much of the overtime is justified. But on the other hand, if we don't get our personnel costs under control, it's going to limit our ability to do some of the other things which each of our colleagues and the administration would like to do. So thank you very much for allowing me to bring this to your attention.
Well, I thank you, Counsel Liency. Thank you for that report. And thank you. We have a very capable Chair of Post Audit. And it's such an important committee at this time in the transition from one administration to another. So I would hope that our committee chair would be... Looking forward to host a series of post-audit hearings. I think it would be extremely helpful for all the members, especially the newest members of the Council. So thank you for that. Counsel Pressley, for what reason do you rise? Please rise and speak. Thank you.
I just wanted to bring to the attention of everyone a letter that your offices should have received. It was sent... It is a letter that I'm asking all of you to sign onto in support of improving working conditions for security officers at the Berklee College of Music. A letter that I'm sending to President Brown, and I hope that all of you will sign onto, and that we're all committed to the stabilization of families and getting everyone on a pathway to self-sufficiency. Certainly, that means that workers have good wages, access to affordable health care, and a host of other things that are critical to ensuring that they're working in good conditions, that they have vacation and sick leave and the like. So I just wanted to flag that this letter has been sent to your offices and ask all of you to please sign on in support of SEIU Local 615's campaign in support of the security workers, officers, rather, at Berklee College of Music. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Pressley. At this time, we will adjourn in the memory of the following. For... Please rise, if you would. Thank you. For Counselor Frank Baker, Claire Larry. For Counselor Seomo, Brendan Tornra. And Robert Red Smith. For Counselor Flaherty, Mary Ellen Stefora. For Counselor Lenehan, the Chair, Lydia Paterson and Paul D. Smith. For Counselor McCarthy, William Ernest Chinets. And Pauline Kootlas. For Counsel Liency, Paul Samuel James, Lorraine Lynette Bowling, Henry Young, Sr., Stanley Washington, Sr., and Amari Baraka. The Chair now moves that when we adjourn, we do so in memory of the aforementioned. Please, at this time, we take a moment of silence. So we adjourn, and we will meet again on Wednesday, February 12, at 12 noon. This meeting is adjourned. I'm getting there.